Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Board Work Session and Public Meeting of February twenty eighth. Can I have a motion to open? We're gonna, we're gonna mix things around a little bit just to keep you on your toes tonight. Can I have a motion to open the Town Board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. The reason we're doing that and going a little bit out of work from what's in the agenda is because we have a number of people here for a public hearing. And we were running a little late and we don't want to keep you all here for what is probably going to be quite lengthy work session. So we're gonna open the public hearing first, then we're gonna go back to the work session, and then we're gonna come back to the Town Board meeting. So can I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing with regard to a local law regarding statewide exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, perfect. Ed, you wanna take it away?
So this is a partial real property tax exemption that the town has had on the books since two thousand and three, but last year the state amended the statute that allows municipalities to offer that exemption. And the town was, is required to align its local law with the new state law, and that's what the local law that is before you does. We mentioned some of the changes that, and they're, they're, for the most part slight, but there's one important one. And this was something that the board discussed with the volunteers that came about a month ago, and that's to lower the eligibility from five years to two. And the board heard from the volunteers that that was really gonna help in their efforts with respect to recruitment. So that's, that's in the local law, but for the most part, this is re-adopting what's already on the books.
All right.
And Josh is here as well, if anybody has any questions about the tax implications.
Um, Josh, was there anything you wanted to add before we opened it up for public comment?
Well, thank you for having me back to talk about it. You know, I think that if the board were to pass this tonight, I think, you know, I would be in touch with the chiefs straight away so that we can get those members that would qualify with the different parameters, so we can get them on the books for this twenty twenty-three tentative assessment law.
All right, thank you. All right. I guess we're gonna open it up to public comments now. Does anyone here in the audience have any public comments on this proposed local law? Come on. If you can, for the record, just state your name and address.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Mark Hirschfield. I'm currently the captain at the Chapua Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Our address is two thirty-three North Burley Avenue, but hopefully you guys knew that already. So I wanna speak in favor of this law. As we discussed a few weeks ago, we think this is an important change to help us attract and retain our members. Covid had a real, you know, bad effect on us. People moved away, people stopped writing. And frankly, we're still in a rebuilding process trying to get back to where we were and get ahead of where we were in terms of having membership. So anything we can do as a town and a village to sort of help that along is appreciated, and will go a long way towards helping us to help you all. So we think this is a really good provision, and we would urge you guys to adopt it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry for the glare. My name is Greg Santone. I'm with the Millwood Fire Department, Fire Department's one hundred Millwood Road, Millwood, New York. Just to echo Mark's comments, we appreciate the Town Board's support. You've always been very supportive of the volunteers, and we really sincerely appreciate that. Volunteerism is on the decline. People have busy schedules. Our training requirements, mandated training requirements continue to increase. So anything we can do to encourage members to remain members, so this is both a recruitment and a retention tool, is very helpful to us. So I'd like to encourage the Town Board to move forward with this. We do appreciate it's one tool in the toolbox. We still have a lot of ground to cover and a lot of progress to make in recruiting and retaining members, but every, every piece of support helps quite a bit. Thank you so much, and thank you for moving the agenda around. Thank you so much. That was very, very helpful. Thank you.
My pleasure. All right, anyone else in the audience? Okay. Is there anyone online who has a comment?
No hands are raised online.
No hands are raised? All right, going once. All right, well, I, I do wanna say that, you know, I've been sitting up here for what? Close to ten years already, and we have always been trying to find ways to help not only show our appreciation for our first responders, but also find ways to, you know, incentivize membership and retention, as you mentioned, right? So I think this is something that, and we've been pretty constrained by law as to what we've been allowed to do, so the fact that we do have an option here that can help, I certainly am fully in favor of this law. I don't know if anyone else has any comments, otherwise we're actually gonna move it to a vote.
Yeah, I would just say that we are so extremely grateful to volunteer first responders, and not only do you save the town a lot of money, but we are so thankful to have people who really care about our community. I mean, you do so much more than just the task of the task, daily tasks at hand. We have people who really care about our community, so we're very grateful for that. And, you know, I'm certainly in favor of the law.
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you to all of you for volunteering and serving the community. And as a resident, I very much appreciate that you keep us safe. And as a Town Board member, I am glad to support this, even though it's relatively small thing, I think it's the least we can do. As long as it's within our power, I am in support of it.
Did I?
Did I?
All right, so, you know, generally, after a public hearing, we don't vote right away, but this is one, we haven't had anybody really opposed to this, and I know it's time-sensitive as well, so we're actually gonna move to close the public hearing and then vote on this matter tonight. So can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, should we adopt the resolution now or just wait?
We need to do it now so that they can hear it.
Okay. Can we read it, number eleven?
Number eleven. I'll read it. I move to adopt a local law amending chapter one twenty-two of the Town of Newcastle Town Code concerning real property tax exemptions for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers to conform with the N Y R P T L section four six six dash A as amended.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passed. Well, you're all welcome to stay, but I'm sensing mass exodus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you for all you do.
Good night.
Good night. Good night. All right, so now, do we need to adjourn the public hearing to open the work session? We do, right?
Public meeting.
I mean, the public meeting. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn the public Town Board meeting and open our work session?
Motion to adjourn public town meeting, motion, do we have to vote on that first?
No, we can do it same time.
And then motion to move, motion to open
Work session.
The work session.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, back to our work session. So the first thing on our agenda today is to talk about the New York State Housing Compact, which I know is an incredibly hot topic among all municipalities in New York State right now. So the Town Board has a couple of things, and I sent you all a proposed resolution the other day, and this is, this is mirrored off of what other municipalities have, at least here in northern Westchester, have adopted. And I actually met with a number of supervisors today at lunch, and those who haven't adopted it, at least five today, said they were planning to adopt this, this evening. I guess it'll all be on Tuesdays. So what this essentially says, and I had it marked as draft because I want us all to discuss it, we usually have work sessions around the table, so it's kinda odd looking back and forth. But what this does say, and let me preface this with the fact that everything in the mayor's housing compact, I think, is a very laudable goal, in the governor's housing compact, is a very laudable goal. And I think the desire to create housing and the desire to create affordable housing is something we should all strive to do. That being said, my concern with it, and I know the concerns of many, is that because it's appearing in the budget and it's really a one-size-fits-all approach, it was mirrored after legislation in California, it's really something that I believe is supposed to be for New York City, but it's being promulgated throughout the state. And in my view, it should not be in the budgetary process because it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. Every town has its own unique challenges that inform zoning, and each town needs to be able to figure out how best to meet those goals of increasing housing in general and affordable housing specifically, in a way that makes sense for that town in terms of, you know, topography, parking, infrastructure, schools, everything else. So in my view, and what this resolution says is, we're imploring the governor and the New York State legislator, legislature, to remove those proposals from the budget and instead move it to the legislative process, where local municipalities and governments can then have a collaborative dialogue to figure out how best to incentivize municipalities and move municipalities toward being able to adopt appropriate zoning that really reflects each municipality's, you know, challenges and, and needs. And it also asks the legislature to please preserve and protect municipal home rule and local zoning powers, which is in the Constitution. And really, the reason it is, is because, again, each municipality knows best what works within their town. So just to reiterate, while we like the goals of this compact, I think the budget is the wrong place to put it. And what this resolution would do is just ask them to please remove it from the budget and move it to the legislative process. Then, before I, we talked about it, then I also sent you guys this letter, this open letter to Governor Hochul, ready the housing compact. This was something that was drafted by the Westchester Municipal Officials Association, and in consultation with the State Housing Division of Housing and Community Renewal, we spoke to Assemblyman Burdick, Senator Harkum, as this was being drafted. I believe this was sent us yesterday to sign. We did sign it, as did, I believe, forty-one of the forty-five municipalities in Westchester here, signed this document. I think it's, it's very good. It says, similar to the resolution, that everything should be moved to the legislative, legislative process, and it also talks a little bit about, about the safe harbor, about that we should retain SECR, that we should incentivize desired housing stock instead of mandating it from the top down. We should talk about expanding financial support for infrastructure. So right now, they're proposing two hundred and fifty million dollars throughout the state to make available for infrastructure changes to support significant zoning changes. I think we personally could use two hundred and fifty million dollars right now pretty easily for infrastructure changes, and so it's just a small, it's such a small bucket. In order to do that appropriately, I think you would need at least five billion dollars to go throughout the state to help support infrastructure, you know, street size, sewer, septic, we're under water treatment, we're under a gas moratorium, so how are you enhancing our grid, or how, how else you supply power? So it does give examples of things that we think are appropriate to be discussed and considered in the legislative process as we look at this, this housing compact and try to approach these goals. So that being said, I wanna kinda open it up to discussion, both on the resolution, the letter can't be changed, it's something, you all know, I signed it yesterday, but it's something that is coming from, from a large group that worked on this, and it was really municipalities could feel free to sign it or not, and we, we did all agree that we signed this yesterday and went up to the governor today. But I would love to ratify that letter because I think, I actually think it's great and has a lot of, of really concrete examples of things that need to be considered in the legislation as we figure out how to, how to accomplish these goals. So I will open it up to the board to discuss.
Thank you, Lisa.
Are you moving?
I don't think this is working. Okay, I don't think I need a microphone. I have a pretty loud voice. Anyway, several residents have, have voiced their concerns to me about this proposed, proposed legislation, and it's definitely on the top of residents' minds, at least the ones that I've interacted with, and I know that many local municipalities are also worried about this. And it's, in my opinion, just a pretty straightforward issue here is, is it's infrastructure. We can't just wave a magic wand and, and put up buildings without there being other collateral consequences to our hamlet. So we have to think about solving this problem in a thoughtful, collaborative way that works best for the community. Water treatment would be a big one, sewage would be a big one. I mean, we have to fix the sewers in Millwood as they are now, right? So I appreciate that we signed this open letter. There, I think you said forty-one out of forty-five supervisors and mayors and local municipalities have signed on to this letter. I think it would be important for us to pass the proposed resolution so our residents know that we're doing everything we can, we're thinking about it, we're working on it. You know, that's, that's kind of where my thought process is right now.
Okay, well, I'll just add my thoughts to this. First of all, I think we need to, to all keep in mind that the law has not been passed yet, so we, we really don't know what the outcome is going to be. It still has to go through the state senate and the state assembly negotiations, so we have yet to see what's really going to come out. But we're trying to make our voices heard in the process. So we know that housing is a very important issue. It would increase the vibrancy of our hamlets. We've all said this at one point or another. So we've all been working on this. We know that affordability is a concerning issue. It affects our workforce and our regional economy, but each municipality has unique features, as we've said before. For us, I, I do believe we all have to be rooted in reality in order to address these issues in a real and authentic way. So here we have infrastructure capacity issues. We have sewer and septic systems that are, you know, very delicate. We don't have much of a sewer system. Our septic systems are, you know, sometimes at the brink of failure. We have serious stormwater issues. I remember in two thousand and five, we had a bell moving up ceremony, and all the cars that were parked were pretty much totaled, a lot of them. So just to give an example, so we do have capacity issues here, and we need to take a look at what we can do about housing and increasing that for the vibrancy of our hamlets, which is something that we've all wanted to do, and work with the governor and what she's trying to propose, and it has to be a two-way street. I know that Jeremy spoke to Assemblyman Burdick, who is very much in favor of the letter that Lisa was describing, and our resolutions, I'm not sure about our other state representatives, but I just have to say that it's very much a matter of collaboration, and I, I don't believe that the budget process lends itself to that collaborative exchange of information and facts. So I do agree that we need to remove this from the budget process, and that's essentially what the resolution is saying. I mean, we could talk about all of the details and whereas clauses of the resolution and the tone of it, but ultimately, we're looking at the therefore clause, which is the ultimate ask of the resolution. And the letter is pretty much consistent with the resolution. So I think we're all saying pretty much the same things with, you know, slight differences around the edges in terms of, you know, where we stand in wanting to work with the governor. But I do believe that the process must be more collaborative in order to have realistic results and not have another round of, you know, ideology without much impact.
I also just wanna clarify, I don't know if we touched upon this, but Lisa, it's my understanding that there are multiple municipalities that have passed very similar, if not identical, resolutions tonight?
Yes.
I, so I can't say that I'm adamantly opposed to the housing compact. I have some serious concerns, but like Vicki said, you know, there's, our state legislators are right now negotiating, trying to influence changes, and, and I'm not optimistic it's gonna come out, to be honest, and I think that this is going to come at some point, no matter what. Because frankly, if we had all been doing enough as municipalities, and I'm not singling out us, in fact, I think we've probably been trying, but if municipalities have been doing enough to address housing, we wouldn't be in a place where the governor feels like she has to push this down. And so, again, I can't really say that I'm adamantly opposed to it, but the fact that it's in the budget means they wanna put some money with it. Obviously, not enough, like you said, two hundred and fifty million dollars is almost laudable when it comes to infrastructure. But I, I understand why it's in the budget process because I'd like to see them add incentives to really enable us to build housing the way that we want to. I'm extremely uncomfortable with any of the variations that take SECR out completely. I think that is, that is a non-starter. And the TOD legislation I do find concerning because it is such a blanket. So that said, I'm glad you signed the letter because I like the productive feedback that it included. I don't, I don't completely agree with the resolution, but I'm not sure that I wanna sit here and spend too much time arguing about it because when it comes down to it, we need to be focusing on how we're adding housing. So I mean, something I'd like us to try to think about is maybe, is there a housing committee or a task force or some group that we could start to assemble so that we're thinking about how to process this in whatever form, whenever it comes, for the future? So those are my thoughts.
Okay. You know, I think, Holly, to your point, I think what we were saying was, none of us were really against the goals of that housing compact. It's just, again, because I agree that we need more housing and we need more affordable housing throughout the state generally, but my issue is that it's in the budget, and which doesn't, which has to be passed by April thirtieth. So that does not give much time to actually reach out to municipalities to figure out how best to make this work on, on a statewide basis. So my concern is more that it come out of the budget to allow us then the time to work it through the legislative process. So you even saw, like, last year with Senator Harkum's A D U legislation, which was legislation, and upon hearing from municipalities and realized there were things in there that weren't gonna work, he said, okay, let me go back to the drawing board, and now it's not out yet, but I, I've seen a preview of his legislation, and I think most municipalities actually can get behind his new proposed legislation. But we could only do that because it went through the legislative process, and it, it looked at different stakeholders and allowed us all to kind of collaborate and give our two cents as to what makes, what works in our municipalities, so that then when it's adopted, it's something that can work for all of us and actually, hopefully incentivize A D Us to be built in municipalities. We have that legislation on the books, there are some municipalities that don't, and actually, I would, I would encourage us to look at our A D U legislation again and see if there, perhaps it's too stringent, just it hasn't been looked at in a very long time. So I would actually propose we look at it and see if there are things that need to be changed or, or just revisit it in there. But we were able to get there because it was in the legislative process and not in a very quick budgetary process that came out in February and has to be improved in April.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, you know, the conversation was happening last year, I guess, to some degree I'm disappointed that it wasn't processed throughout last year so that it could be in the budget with funding for these incentives and infrastructure improvements associated with it. So being what it is, it's not ideal that it's in the budget. I hope, though, that our representatives like Chris Burdick and Pete Harkum are making the concerns for us known, since they have a more direct line into the process. I mean, I shouldn't even say a more direct line, they're directly in the process right now with the budget.
They are, and I've, I've actually spoken with Assemblyman Burdick and Senator Harkum, as well as representatives from the governor's office as well, to kind of express, you know, concerns as well.
I just don't want us to get so hung up on whether this is, whether this resolution is right, whether the letter is right, but remember that we still have the goal and to make sure that we're still pushing forward on that and not spinning wheels on, you know, like I said, I'm not gonna argue about the wording in the, in the resolution, because, again, I think the important thing is that we're thinking about how we're going to move forward, whether this is the end result that we have to handle or not.
Right.
I think, I think it's, for me, municipalities, especially for me being on the Town Board, especially in Newcastle, wanna make sure that we're being heard in Albany and wanna make sure that our representatives understand our concerns, and maybe it feels like because this is being rushed and, and being put through the budget process, we don't feel like that's happening. Like Vicki said, it has to be a two-way street, this has to be collaborative, and I think the concern is that it's not really that way right now, and our only recourse is to sign on to a letter with other municipalities, to pass a resolution, to really make our voices be heard and, and really make sure that the message is getting to Chris Burdick, to Representative Burdick, and, and to Albany, that, you know, we want this to work for everyone, we want to do this, but we don't want our hand forced, because ultimately, I feel very strongly that Newcastle knows what's best for Newcastle. Our residents know what's best for, for, how, how we can best meet these goals, and that's why we're, we're, you know, seeking to, to propose this resolution.
So I would, I just wanna add that I would change some of the wording to the hereby resolved clause. I would say what it says now at the end is
The first one or the second?
The first, the first therefore clause, that the Town of Newcastle implores the governor and/or the New York State Legislature to remove the housing compact proposal from the New York State fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, and it says, and future budgets. I would remove and future budgets, because if it goes through the legislative process, it would have to go through a budget cycle. I'd remove that and continue after twenty twenty-four budget, and instead utilize the legislative process. I would put that in because it's not giving an option for this to move forward. So it's a, and instead utilize the legislative process and, and continue on the way it is, and engage local municipal governments in dialogue to address our common goals.
Yep.
So that way, we don't remove the avenue of putting it through the budget, and we give it a path forward.
Yeah, I've got those changes.
Okay.
Okay, great. I also think, so, you know, adopting this resolution, I think, does two things. It first lets our residents know, and it does say the first whereas clause, the creation of additional housing, including affordable housing, is a laudable goal. So I think it lets our residents know, this is the direction we're moving, but we don't think putting this in the budgetary process is correct, and it lets them know that we're, we're kind of standing up for what's right in our community. It also gives our state representatives backup to say, hey, this is what Newcastle thinks. Look, they passed a resolution. It's not just me talking to the board on the phone, it's they passed this resolution that I would say after we pass it, we would actually send it to everybody in, in state government.
Could I maybe propose a change, though, in the first whereas? Not just saying that it's a laudable goal, maybe we could say that it's a shared goal, or somehow indicate that this is something that we, not, not that we just think it's, it's a good Or somehow indicate that this is something that we, not, not that we just think it's, it's a good goal, but it's something that we are gonna be actively working towards anyways. I think that that is more clear with our, with our residents about how we feel about it.
That's okay, I like the word laudable, though, can we say shared and?
That's fine.
In what order?
Just shared and.
And another, one other thought, but the very last result, the very result. I don't, something makes me uncomfortable about adamantly opposed is the governor's housing compact. Cause I don't know that that's exactly reflective of what we've just said. We don't, we're saying we don't like the process that it's going through, not that in and of itself, a housing compact is a problem. I don't know if there's a way that we can easily reword that to just aspects of.
So I actually think the housing compact is a problem, I think the goals of the housing compact are not a problem. I think by do, taking a top-down approach and making this uniform throughout the state instead of, and basically eviscerating home rule and local zoning powers, I think that is the problem. I think the goals of the housing compact, again, are shared goals.
Can I say, I think that the last resolve is problematic, because we actually don't know what the housing compact will be.
But we know what was, has she's, she's proposed.
We know what the proposal is exactly, but we're saying, we, we're referring to the housing compact, which doesn't actually exist yet. And what we have said is that we want it removed from the budget process. We want it in the legislative process, and we want a collaborative approach.
But if it stays in the budget process, it's gonna pass.
We also wanna protect municipal home rule and local zoning powers.
Well, we wanna, but I mean municipalities understand what their constraints are and what their, you know, what their communities have to, have to deal with regarding all kinds of infrastructure. But I think it, it is problematic to say that we either repose or we're in favor of something that doesn't exist yet, where we don't really have the, the full outlines. The, the governor could come out at the end of this budget process and say, but there is no TOD legislation, that it, it will be an incentive. I mean, we just don't know. They could put SEACRA back into the process.
Well, look, you can, you can say the governor's proposed housing compact, but again, you can only drag, you can only resolve something as of the date you resolve it. If things change, it doesn't mean that the resolution you pass today is necessarily gonna be the same as our opinion five months from now. We may agree to something, but we can say the governor's proposed housing.
Adamantly opposed.
Right, I mean, there actually is no housing compact.
There, well, there is, that's a proposal, right.
Yeah, it hasn't passed.
Well, we, I defined it as housing compact up here, it's, it's a defined term. Governor Hochul's fifty fiscal year 2024 executive budget included the New York Housing Compact, and it consists of, and this is all of it, so it's a defined term in this resolution.
But, well, it's a housing compact that has not passed.
What if we said draft legislation in its current form?
That's fine.
The governor's draft legislation in its current form.
Yeah, draft.
Are you gonna just, and that will be the definition of housing compact? That's how I would do that. Put it in the first whereas clause.
Yeah, just define it accurately, that's all.
All right, does anyone else have any, any more thoughts on this?
I would like, I, I would like it soon in the future to talk about the direction that we're gonna be taking to address housing regardless. I know that we've talked a little bit about the train station, but, and we're looking at Fifty North Greeley, but it's, it's narrow, and I'd like to broaden the conversation.
I agree, but I think that that conversation is also gonna be shaped by what eventually comes down from Albany.
But, but, but again, I mean, I'd love to see a committee or something formed, maybe in the meantime, to be ready to process these things with us. Food for thought.
Agree, the reason why I'm, I'm hesitant is because I don't know, you know, the only reason really that I understand so much of this legislation is because I've been speaking about it with people from Albany and, and other municipal officials. So I don't, I don't know that I wanna put the burden on our residents to be able to understand this. That's why I had, you know, one of the reasons I asked Chris Burdick to come and speak to the board, and Pete Harkum to speak to the board, and Vada Kashi to speak to the board, because I wanted to get their views on the legislation as well. So while I agree, a committee to study housing is not a bad idea, I wouldn't want them to also be tasked with interpreting the legislation.
No, but by no means meant to imply that. Just rather than waiting to see where this all ends up, I'd, I'd like us to just be proactive in being ready and figuring out how we are going to approach it, instead of just the one-off type situations.
I think Holly, maybe what you're saying, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I think that, you know, my view of this is that it's important for us to have our own vision, regardless of what the, the governor is saying, whether we agree with it or we don't agree with it. I think it's very important for us to have a starting point for ourselves about what our vision is for what we wanna see in our hamlets.
Yes, I, I think.
You know, you and I, Lisa, have talked about wanting vibrant hamlets. Wanting, you know, multifamily housing, wanting mixed-use developments, we've talked about that. But we haven't developed a real vision for that. I, I know that we have our public lands, you know, North Greeley was a great opportunity to do that. We didn't do that, and you know, we have a proposal for it, so now we're looking at things in a piecemeal way. And we could talk about North Greeley another time, it's not on the agenda now, but I'm just afraid that it's just, just no longer a balanced view for development. So I, I think that what Holly is alluding to is, you know, having a holistic vision, so that we can actually plan. Because sort of waiting to get proposals from, from property owners and developers is not a way to really plan something in a way that's appropriate for a hamlet, in a way that's sustainable, and that can be a little bit more even keeled towards, you know, the, the entire area.
Be a little bit less reactive, um, in, in kind of figure out how we're gonna do that.
Yeah, well, we are, you know, we are, as you know, interviewing firms to do a charrette and a public outreach process on town-owned land. And the community did speak out very strongly against the Form-based code, which is why I'm not there.
Absolutely not going there again.
So, I think it's something we, we should be looking at, you know. We, we sort of went there a little bit with mandating ten percent affordability requirement in the downtown. Again, we can't mandate that private property owners do something with their property. We can never mandate that, and the housing compact can't even mandate that. It can mandate that we change zoning, but not that we require somebody to do that with their property. But I do think it's a conversation that's worth having.
And if, if we don't get these goals, that, you know, the, the governor's proposing some, some targets, so I mean, if this all comes out and these don't exist, what are our goals, and how are we gonna enable it? I just don't wanna, I don't wanna wait another year to continue the conversation.
Well, and don't forget, you know, if this is passed, we have, we will have three years generally to do any of this, at least initially. So, you know, it's not gonna happen instantaneously, but I, I, I do think it's a conversation that we've been having. I didn't know that we necessarily needed a committee on it. I think it's gonna be hard, I, I'm a little concerned, you're gonna get a lot of passionate voices, and I'm not sure that a committee is going to be productive. I think the reason why all of us up here were elected is to make some of those decisions with the input from the community.
Well, we want public engagement.
We do want public engagement, I don't know that a committee is gonna be
I'm not ready, I'm not ready to that, I'm just, again, it's just, I want to see us taking steps proactively, not reacting.
And even though it is private property in some places, it is our job to zone and, and to rezone areas. So, the engagement would be regarding that. You know, it is a town function to do for the community.
Right, but we're not gonna rezone wholesale until we find out what, what our mandate is anyway.
That's not really the point. We, we don't wanna wholesale rezoning, I don't even, I'm not even sure what that means.
Well, the housing compact would mandate it if.
Right, but we're talking about what we would do, not what the housing compact.
Can I just take us on to a topic that's kind of a mental topic? But I just, I, I just don't wanna lose sight of what, you know, while we're looking at this, that, you know, we, we still have, you know, the job to do, which is make sure that either we're reacting to this if it passes, or making sure that we're taking the steps that we've been entrusted with to set goals and enable it for the town.
Okay, all right, so, I would propose, and we're not gonna do it right now, it's the work session, but that with those few changes, we, we adopt this resolution tonight.
I've got the changes.
Okay, perfect. All right, but we're not gonna do that right now, we'll hold that for the resolution, continuing the work session. All right, um.
Why don't we move to our Broken Parks Commission recommendation, we've got people online.
Ah, perfect. All right, so we are gonna move to the Recreation Parks Commission recommendations to rename Upper Getney Field.
Hi, Christine, are you here?
Yep, hi, Ike is here as well.
Yep, hi Ike. Hi Christine.
Hello.
I can't hear you. We can't hear Ike.
They'll have their mind at all.
No, we can't hear Ike, Ike's, something's wrong with his microphone. Not in the work session, thanks.
But there will be later.
In the public meetings, there will.
Hey Ike, just try exiting and coming back in.
Maybe it's his headphones.
Yeah, might be your headphones. Nope.
Yeah, if you ask to just instruct him to exit and come back in.
Yeah, Ike, if you, we've been told if you log out and try to log back into the Zoom, it might reset it. Okay, got a thumbs up. All right, so maybe while we're waiting for Ike to log back in, can we quickly talk about the Quaker Street water main sewer trunk line question?
Sure, so EDR, who is the county's consultant, has approached the town. In addition to the sewer trunk extension that's going from last place up to the southernmost entrance of the Wagon Road Camp, the town is proposing a piggyback project of replacing a water main to try to minimize the disruption to those residents who live along that section of one, uh, one twenty, and also try to save some costs.
Can you hear me now?
Where are you though?
All right.
Oh, there you are. Okay, let's, we're gonna, we're gonna go back to Ike here.
All sorts of technical issues tonight, so I, I apologize. I tried joining earlier from the, from the rink, it's down there running my son's hockey practice earlier, so. Christine, thank you for, for holding down the fourth, I was able to get here.
All right, so, do you wanna, yeah, talk about, about renaming Upper Getney Field?
Yeah, so we had a, a group come to us, led by David Schreiber, who used to be the, the head of the Chapcoy Soccer Club. He approached the Rec Commission last year about renaming Upper Getney Field in honor of Casey Tow, to Casey Tow Field. It, it wasn't a hard sell, sell, that's for sure, the commission was completely on board with it. And that's why they wanted to make the recommendation to Town Board to, to get your approval as well. And if, if all goes well, they're tentatively scheduling a, like to schedule a ceremony at the end of March to formally dedicate the field, if, if all goes well tonight.
So for those of you who may not know, so Casey Tow was a, one of our younger residents, a big soccer player, and unfortunately, he passed away in high school from brain cancer. And his family is very involved in both raising money for brain cancer and also very involved in the soccer programs in our town, including at, at the high school and also our youth soccer programs. I really think it would be a very nice show of support for, for our town and certainly, they've been very, very involved and always giving them time. So this is something I actually would, would love to do, I'm definitely in support of this. And I'm glad to hear the Rec Commission is as well, but I'm happy to hear any other thoughts on this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very much in support of it, and I'm really very grateful to the Tow family for everything they've done for our community and the youth of our community and athletics. They've certainly given so much of themselves and their time, and so we're very appreciative. And I'm certainly, I think this is the least we can do to recognize them and, and their family and Casey.
I agree, and I also just wanna thank Ike and everybody in Parks and Rec for making this happen.
I just have like two questions, I, I mean, I totally support this, but which one is the Upper Field?
So, it's kind of a whole soccer field in Getney, but it's, Ike, you can, you can explain it.
Yeah, so it's, we call it Upper Getney, cause it's kinda on the, the hill at, at Getney Park. But if you go to the back of, of the facility where the baseball fields are, there is a roadway that kind of hangs off to the right there, before you get to the first baseball field. And that'll take you up to the, the soccer field there at the back of Getney.
This is something that is under our purview and not, not to rec to do without us?
It's a town field.
Okay, I was just curious. Yeah, no, I, I'm appreciative for all of their support of town and soccer and it's a tragic loss, so I think it's nice to recognize Casey.
Me too, and, you know, my son personally played soccer, you know, and John was a big part of that soccer program. So I, I, you know, I would love to do this. Is there anyone opposed? All right, any other thoughts? There's no, so what, actually, I do have a question. So what would we do to name it? Are we gonna have a plaque? How is that gonna, what's that gonna look like?
Yeah, so we're going to, the group that approached the, the, us and the Rec Commission, they are doing some fundraising for signage at the field. So there will be a sign similar to what we have at the front of each of our parks. So, or City Park or Smith Park, both signs that we have at the front. There's gonna be a similar-looking sign up by the soccer field now that will say Casey Tow Field. And they are also going to create a small plaque that will be by the entrance to the soccer field itself. Just, I think just a, a quick background of, of Casey and, and why the field is named after him. Again, that's something that they're gonna send to us for approval, and that they're going to fundraise for. So, I think, I think it'll look good, it'll be, it'll be great once we get, once it happens.
All right, great, thank you.
Yeah, and just so everybody's aware now, the, the, cause I, I was confident that everybody would be on page, on, on board with us. So, so I appreciate that, thank you to all, the Town Board. But we're looking at, it hasn't been advertised yet, but we're looking at March thirty-first at four o'clock, I believe it's a Friday, at the field to do a nice little ribbon cutting and, and formal dedication, so you're all invited.
Okay, that's soon. While we have you here.
Yes.
Given that tomorrow's March first and it's snowed, how, how delayed is our, our stairs and retaining wall work at the baseball fields?
It's, it's actually, it's not, they're actually gonna start tomorrow loading in. So they'll start staging tomorrow, we've cleared out Parks Craft, Park staff cleared out most of the area today with snow. They're gonna hit it in the morning before the contractor gets there to clear some more space in the parking lot. But they will start loading in tomorrow with equipment and supplies, so, yeah, no delay, no delay yet.
Okay, good.
Yep.
I like that.
We're excited, can't wait to get it going.
Perfect. All right, I think that's all we need you guys for. All right, well, thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Bye. Bye.
I thought you were gonna ask him about the registration, I got the spring registration, I got postponed until tomorrow.
No, I know it got postponed until tomorrow.
Justice, it announced.
And camp registration is staying on uh March seventh, I believe, at ten AM, that has not changed.
That's correct.
Correct.
Um, anyway. Back to water and sewer. That's really fun stuff, so, um.
So, does he know that the thirty first is the beginning of spring break?
Maybe.
So.
I'll take it up with him in our meeting.
Just, just so you know. Cause I just realized I won't be.
Alright. Alright, so uh there is a um a draft of the letter and survey that E D R would like to send out. Um, the idea was is that when E D R takes and actually puts in the trunk line, the houses that are immediately on one twenty on either side will, um, there will be stubs uh created in the um, um, in the main, uh the trunk line uh that will allow each of those homes to do a direct hookup, so in order for them to to create their plans, they're asking those residents uh where their water and sewer hookups are currently, and that's what the purpose of the uh the brochure is, um, the 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 questionnaire and letter, um.
Um Jill, and I would encourage, make sure we encourage those residents, that if they do want to take advantage of that, that they let us know and do, they do that work while the roads are open.
So the the reason why they wanna know this is because they actually take and they create those stubs.
Yep.
And they install them beyond the um, the pavement line, so that those homes can take and connect.
Okay, good. Without having to rip up the road.
Exactly right, or whatever sidewalk might be there along the way, we actually did the same uh thing with Con Ed's gas main replacement, we replaced the sidewalk that went up to Graffin School a number of years ago.
Hmm. Perfect.
So Jill, those homeowners have to do them privately, they have to.
They would, they would do the actual connection by themselves, it's a fraction of the cost and they would not, um, there there's no need for a legal sewer district for them, so there's a.
Right, but to identify the connection points.
Yes, so they would, they would literally, so, so they're just gonna take and basically draw a little diagram for the consultant, and then the consultant will come out and actually confirm it, um, but the connection.
But how would they know where to do that? Do they have to get someone to come in to do that for them?
No, they're gonna know in their basement where the water comes into their house and where the sewer goes there, and where, and where the septic is.
Oh, in their house, not where the connection would be outside, okay.
No, 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 that that's for E D R, so that's all they're asking, is where, where does the septic pipe lead your home, where does the water pipe come to you, that's all they wanna know. And so they'll just do diagrams, so the question is whether or not the board has an issue with the letter coming from the town and where E D R.
Do, does.
I was hoping that maybe, if if it comes from the town, I was hoping, I was thinking that maybe more people would open it, um, and we'd be able to get the word out a little bit more.
I feel like that's gonna generate a lot of questions, are we prepared for that?
Um, so the the questions are gonna go right now to to town in, uh town engineer, Bob Sealy, but um, we were thinking that we would put uh E D R as a contact um for them to take and be able to answer, cause they're gonna be able to answer more questions than I'll.
I think that's a good compromise, comes from the town with a number to E D R.
Right, to to E D R, so I'll, I'll, I'm happy to sign it and I'll let them answer all the questions. Um, this project is one of the projects that is scheduled, um, it has been pushed with like so many other projects that um the county is doing, they, we were given dates of uh twenty twenty-three. Not gonna happen in twenty twenty-three, it'll be coming down a pike, but at some point it's coming, like everything else, um, the projects are coming to fall more expensive than anyone anticipated. And the county, um, musting, the way the county funds things, they encumber all the money before they start a project. And so this is coming in significantly higher, so they have to go back and ask for more money, so in fact of everything else, it's another little delay, but that's what we are trying.
And this is where there was an opportunity for a sidewalk.
Yes.
Yeah, this was an identified location.
Yes, and we're still working on that.
Um, so we're working.
We're still working on that with the county, they uh they don't like sidewalks to take and slow down their projects, but um since it's appears to be a little bit slower than they anticipated, we're hoping that we can give a little flexibility there. We have not given that.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so the next, our next topic is the Civic Engagement Advisory Board, so, this was we are always um looking for ways to increase uh civic engagement and to make sure that we can disseminate information to our residents, merchants um as quickly and as easily and as thoroughly as possible. So, um, John Garfunkel came to me uh thinking that it would be great to actually have a Civic Engagement Advisory Board, and I am all in favor of this as a way to help to bring different stakeholders together to help get out any messages that we're trying to disseminate and um in terms of communication and also, you know, to reach out to neighborhood groups, uh to, and to recommend even um ways that we can do that. So are there different, you know, information technology tools, are there, what different methods are there to do that? So, um, I sent to the board earlier today, um, a proposed mission statement as well as some goals and measures of success um for this advisory board. Um, John, I'm gonna ask you, do you have anything you wanna say? You do not have to, I told you you didn't have to.
Uh, sure, I can, should I just turn up the mic?
Sure.
I just wanna say before John says anything, John came to all of us over a year ago. So I know we've been talking about this quite a lot, and I think you went to all the board members, so I just wanna say that, just in all fairness to John, that he's been doing this with us for a long time.
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you for being patient.
Yes, okay, thank you all for giving me the opportunity, just presented a little, um, yeah, as I've been in, uh, my name is John Garfunkel from Indian Hill. I've moved, I've lived here a little over two years, uh I had the interesting uh situation of moving here in the midst of virtual life and pretty much encountering the town and everybody in virtual life, it's good to be here physically, um, and learning about things when you move to a town. When you, when I actually moved from out of state to New York City, it really did not need to, didn't take very long to know what was happening in New York City, because you, what happens in New York City is kind of reported around the country, uh when you move from, say, New York City up to small town in Westchester, you're like, okay, who, how does the government work, who's, what's what's happening there, what are the policies, so, um, and we know a lot of people here are are busy. Um, they they have other distractions and there might be a feeling, some people might feel, well, you know, it's town government, maybe it's on autopilot, you know, things are pretty easy here. Um, and some people, they're also, on the other hand, there's some cynicism out there about, well, you know, I I can't, I can't get uh town to do this, or the governor says this. And you you hear that and you say, well, how do we engage people differently? Um, so yeah, we wanna look at that, we wanna reach out to uh people in technology, people in marketing and communications. Um, people in uh civic boosters in real estate who know the town, um, and to be able to talk about this and say, are there are there ways to get people connected that we haven't been doing, and then, and then if we succeed here, can we do a model for the county? Cause I've had my questions for the county and as helpful and as friendly as our county representatives are, they're sometimes harder to get things going. So you you say, okay, can we look at things across the county? Um, and I know some of the bigger cities, New York City especially, has a civic engagement board, um, today, just today, the uh President Obama's Foundation, the Civic Nation, announced a new project for civic engagement, and they're working with big cities across the country where there's often a lot of issues for people to tackle, there's a lot of young people, so, um, that's what we wanna look at here. If we don't have the issues, let's see what we can address, how we can look at it different ways, um, how we can serve maybe as a in-house consultant for uh helping the advisory boards, cause I've dialed into different advisory boards and learned really different ways of communicating and doing things. And I guess I'd add from my list of who we want, we also imagine having student members. This would have been completely wild idea when I was a student for somebody to say, hey, you can help work for City of White Plains and doing this. Didn't come to me at the time, but I was in a civics group, we did go to Albany as like a mock civic, so this would be something I would love to get, um, high school students to be involved with too. So thank you very much for considering it, and I hope we can do great things this year for all of us.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, and yes, we love getting students involved, um, and it's another demographic, and the earlier they learn to be um active citizens in their community, the better, I think. Um, so one of the things that we, uh, John and I worked on is this proposed mission statement. So the Civic Engagement Advisory Board will research and advise on helping town residents communicate and participate with town governance. It will look at new technologies and organizations, practices for helping residents connect and work effectively together on town volunteering efforts. Um, and I would also encourage, you know, and as this committee works together, you know, to to make sure that HOAs are are included and various, you know, cultural groups, to make sure that everybody um has as much outreach as possible, because we know, for instance, seniors aren't always on their computer or on Facebook or Instagram, so we wanna make sure that that there, that outreach to like our senior community, for instance, may be different than the way we would um give outreach to students or families. So I applaud this uh, this idea, and I I think it's something that I would really like to see a new committee. So we're proposing up to ten members on this committee, I think more than that, it gets, uh, you can't function, but we do have, to your point, a lot of really uh intelligent and and uh people who do this for a living. Uh, so to the extent we can get residents, um, who do, you know, technology, information systems, software, marketing um involved, as well as making sure that uh residents and merchants and all different, all our constituencies are are included, I think that would be great. Anyone else have any thoughts?
I mean, I know you guys said that he's been talking with you um on the Town Board for about a year, but I've also been talking with John as a citizen before I was on the board about the same thing as well. So I'm definitely in support um of of this committee, and I think it's a pretty good um set of goals.
John, do you think ten members is a good number and that would include students?
Yes, yeah, yes. Cross-section, right? Yeah.
Do you think that there's a minimum you need to get started?
Oh, it's a minimum, uh, it's certainly three or four is a minimum. Um, and yeah, and if more than ten people are, we always, we wanna figure out how to have like a elastic concept where if people aren't on the meetings, they can they can email in and say, yes, you know, we could exchange ideas, um, I know certain committees in town, I'm on a group of like peripheral other people, like, you know, we'll invite you, you know, we'll remind you about this meeting coming up, which.
Sure, it doesn't mean other people can't participate.
Right.
And it's certainly something also we can revisit, you know, I, as a committee is starting, you don't want it to be too large, because it's unwieldy and you're, you're trying to formulate how you're gonna do things, um, and it's, it can get unwieldy with too many. However, later on, once it's more of a functioning committee, you may realize that you want more people. Um, but it certainly doesn't preclude utilizing other individuals who maybe aren't on the committee but wanna donate their time.
So I just, um, so I mean, call the committee the Civic Engagement Advisory Board. Civic engagement is about um residents participating in town government and activities. Um, whereas your goals are more of um the committee increasing communication from the local government to the community, so it's sort of going the the other way. And so are you hoping to increase civic engagement by increasing, by bettering the communications and and thereby sort of in a more passive way, hoping to increase civic engagement? Cause I see that the goals are really more focused towards communications and communications mainly going one way.
Well, I mean, I.
Which is absolutely laudable, I I just wanna be, you know, clear about the goals.
I mean, I do see it as a, I do see it as a two-way street, you, when you communicate outwards, you wanna know that that people are reading it, have reactions, where they can react, um, I mean, just throwing this out, I, you know, looking for an email address of a given committee, a a given advisory board in town, um particularly the advisory boards, they, you know, there may be, sometimes they're hard to find, uh, just a simple, that simple aspect. Um, so making sure, and just, and at least just, also I see this group as advisory. Asking questions, providing answers, sending them to you, the board, and saying, this is, this is what we we found out, this is, um.
I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is it seems more like a communications committee, looking at the goals, which would then result in engagement, but it seems like the goals are all focused on communication such as, um, you know, survey software, um, uh best practices among advisory boards, um, survey the town on communications, participation in volunteering, so again, you know, it's a survey, um, websites and social media.
But I think engagement is always active, so to me, engagement means.
No, no, I know, let, let me just finish, let me just finish what I'm saying.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is that it it sounds to me, and this is all really laudable, I'm not, you know, criticizing at all, I just wanna be clear about what it is. It sounds like these are goals that are really geared towards a communications committee, so I just wanna flush that out, let me.
So to me, engagement is not necessarily active, it can be, but it's not always. To the extent we communicate to our residents so they feel engaged in our community and then willing to potentially dedicate their time, but also even just to be aware of what we're doing, so that if, let's say, we had a public hearing tonight, if they were unaware of it, they're not going to be engaged, but if they are, then they may want to engage in one or many things that we are doing, either through active participation or even just speaking with each other and and just being engaged, lowercase e, in the community. So to me, that's where the name comes from, I think it's more than just communication, I think it's trying to foster engagement of our residents in the government of our of our town, so I actually think it is more than just communication.
Right, but when you say. Sure, but when you say civic engagement, that is sort of a term of art, right, so that's what we're calling the committee, which is fine.
Yeah.
But the goals are geared towards communication, and they're both okay, I just want us to be clear about the mission. Civic engagement does mean something, we we talk about that often in terms of participation.
Right, um, yeah, I mean, I would like to see participation and the part of, uh, I came up with the name, looking at a lot of different efforts, and it helps that you look at, if you look up civic engagement, you find existing, cities have existing boards with that name, that's what use in New York City. And uh, reading the article just today, uh about what Obama's Foundation is doing, they use the word civic engagement in their, in their materials, so um, it's, it's another engaging name.
No, I think it's all very laudable, maybe I'm being picky about the meaning of civic engagement, but it does mean participation, but um, I think that it's a great idea, and um,
Alright.
I think it could lead to very good things.
Vicky, great, Vicky, for what it's worth, I think that improving communication enables that engagement that you're looking for.
It is right.
It does, yes.
So I, I'm, I'm actually really comfortable with the, with the name and the mission, I feel like they're compatible.
I agree, as am I. Alright, um, great, so then our next steps um would be, Ed, can you draft a resolution?
Sure.
Um, to form this board, and then at our next public meeting, I'm hoping we'll just, we'll be able to pass this and then um advertise for engagement in joining this board. Alright, and thank you for all of your, for all of your help and and your ideas and your uh your passion for this, I appreciate it, John. Alright, so now we're moving on just to some administrative items to close out the work session.
Okay, so we've got our payment of claims and adoption of all the reports and minutes. Um, so we've got uh purchase and installation of highly maintenance materials, this is just stuff that Bart needs to just keep the town running. Um, we've got a number of uh capital projects and budgets. Um, the twenty twenty-three performing arts, uh, this is for the roof replacement project, we're gonna rock bid on that shortly. The next is establishment of our infamous Getney Park retaining wall and staircase. Uh, we've also got one on Byron Lake Road, which is a FEMA project, that means that we're seeing funds through FEMA, this is uh damage from, what was the last one? I don't.
East Ias.
Was it East Ias that was this one, or Ias?
Uh, the pedestrian bridge was definitely East Ias, I'm not sure, I think it was the same thing.
I was, oh, this man is in East Ias as well, yeah, East Ias, thank you, Rob. Um, shut the road stabilization, which is a. Shutter Road Stabilization, which is a combination of FEMA also um and for also damaged caused by East A S and also East A P S N. Because of where it is. Um, and last but not least is the one twenty pedestrian bridge, uh. Which again, we're looking for reimbursement for FEMA. Um, for to be able to uh to proceed. So that's been inspected and it's back in operation. Sorry, we had that little kerfuffle the other day, but all good. Um. Authorization to use town property. The Girl Scouts are ready for cookie sales. Must be spring right on the corner. Um. The Chappaqua Road Replant is looking for permission to use our commuter parking lot to do a drive-in movie this summer. They've got uh a weekend in uh in May. Uh, planned out for that. Um, the next is authorization for a promo um conference. Brussels is one and two people, so two.
Yeah, we we really didn't discuss that, so.
Okay, so you withhold that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, those are the fourteen. Okay. Uh, next is uh authorization to hire Barton and La Judas to apply for uh fiscal year twenty-four congressionally directed spending. This was a late addition for the board. Uh, Barton and La Judas approached us about a funding opportunity uh through Senator Schumer's um congressional monies.
For the chaplain?
For the chaplain. Um, we are even applying about eighty percent of the chaplain. Um. I don't know if we're good or not, but we are gonna try. Um, it's thirty-five hundred dollars. It has a very short turnaround. It's uh due by uh March sixth. So they're ready to jump right on it. They've already helped us with grants for this um project before, so they're ready to go. Um, so. Ready to put the board's seats fit to approve that. Um, next is authorization to approve the purchase of the camera system for Town Hall, the train station, and also under the hundred pass. Um, this is actually grant monies from uh Assemblyman Verdic. Um, we've gotten the um, the invoices already, um, from Simon Securities. Wondering if they go on that. Um, and last but not least, um, is um. The one twenty culvert replacement. We had a, we. We had a meeting quite a while ago. Uh, we've representatives from New York State DOT. Um, who informed us that there is a culvert under one twenty right by Cape Street. It's where that significant dig in the road was, that they filled in. Um, but that culvert needs to be replaced. Um, they were supposed to start as of March. They're waiting on Con Ed to do uh infrastructure work. Con Ed has not shown up yet. The project is once again getting pushed. When they had originally approached us, we said to them, wouldn't it be great if you could do it over the summer when everybody's out of town and it would be a little least. Can be inconvenience for commuters and school bus traffic? And they said, oh, no, 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 we're gonna be gone well before the summer. P.S. Yes, forward. They came back to us. Guess what? They're gonna come back and do it all over the summer. They're proposing a six-week closure of one twenty. They're actually at Cape Street. There is a detour um that can come around uh Douglas State Camp.
Yeah, Douglas State Camp for local traffic.
For local traffic only. Um, there is a truck detour. Uh, DOT will assign that it's a ways out.
It's really far.
It's really far, but this is not our issue. This is DOT's infinite wisdom and their scheduling. Um, so we we did have a meeting. Um, I told them I would. Um, propose it to the board and get your feedback. The chief of police was there, Bart was there, uh Bob Sealy was there. Um. Let's see, who else?
Um, Jill.
Yes.
Just uh along with that. If we don't agree to close it for six weeks, it's gonna take a lot longer.
Yeah, it's gonna. It's gonna take three months and they will do it through the summer through September and into October. And I.
No.
We really don't want that.
And it won't be closed, but it would be, you know, one lane over there and it will take quite a long time.
It will be a single lane of traffic. Okay. During the closure, they have also assured us that they will, they will maintain safe pedestrian passage. Um. Um, we have given them literally a drop dead date of August eighteenth. It's gonna be July fifth through August eighteenth. Um, their hours are the, we've asked them preferred hours to be eight to six. Um, Monday through Friday and nine to four on Saturday. They will only do Saturday if they are up against a deadline. They can't make it. I told them if they go one day, they have a six P M deadline on August eighteenth. If it's six oh one, they need to take and um. Bring in the the traffic. There's all sorts of things they need to do that's gonna cost them more money than working on Saturdays. Um, we appreciate.
It would be really bad if they were late and we run into the school here, buses.
They would be, yes, yes. Um, so if if the board is willing to entertain this option. Um, I will meet again with uh Seth Cohen from the bus company and the first responders and we'll go through the detours with them. Um, they were part of the original conversation when we had figured out that we were gonna have a single lane of traffic and there was gonna be um a temporary light and transponders. To allow the um the first responders to infect the light and be able to get through in case of an emergency. Um, so.
So to me, Jill, that's. I I think this is the best. I hate to close a road, but I think it's a lot better to close a road. In July and August over the summer than to keep it open with one-way traffic and school buses and everything else. My one concern though is. The first responders. So when we had our first meeting, you know, I know they were concerned, but it was the thought that. They would have a transponder that would allow a light to turn green if they needed to get through.
Right.
Here, you know, it's gonna add more time to take a detour. So that's my only concern is to make sure that they're they're comfortable with this.
Yeah, um, I'll, if if this is something that that the board would seriously consider, then I'll propose to submit with the uh the first responders. But I wanted to make sure that this is something that the board was comfortable with before I went any further. But I'll definitely, you know, invite them to the table. We'll have a conversation again. With the contractor and uh and DOT. We've done this before, so it's.
Mm-hmm.
We'll do it again. Okay, I'll keep you posted. Thank you.
So does anyone have thoughts? I think this is the right.
Uh, no, I think that that's a.
Way to go.
Eight.
Yeah, I think.
The lesser of two evils. Yeah, every.
Two evils, exactly. That's that's the perfect way, but it, you know, unfortunately, there there is a lot of work that needs to be, you know, if you ignore the law, the infrastructure long enough. Yeah, this is what happens.
Just wanna make sure we we really. Communicate this greatly and make sure everyone knows and is aware in the detour. Talk to the people on Cape Street.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Telecourse is gonna happen.
There's also, um, they originally wanted to do some staging on Cape Street. We said absolutely not. They cannot be any cars parked on Cape Street at all. That's gotta be left clear.
Yeah.
Obviously, we'll be using our um electronic signboard. Um. By Bell School to make sure that everybody knows about that this is coming. We understand that there's gonna be uh buses for camps. So there are gonna be inconveniences. Um, and uh, you know, the kids are gonna be on the bus a little bit longer and we're terribly sorry about that, but.
Just anticipating a potential concern from Cape Street residents is the speed of traffic that might be going through. Is there anything we can do proactively?
I am confident that the police will be out there in force on a regular basis. Um, and monitoring traffic and making sure everything. Traffic stays slow. These are residential streets. They really, you know, and and also the the prohibition and limitation of only allowing. Local traffic. So you're not going to get trucks whipping through there.
Right.
You should not be getting trucks whipping through there as much as they're delivering to Cape Street.
Right.
Yeah. I've heard traffic moves pretty quickly along there already, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Does anyone have any questions about um anything that we went through? Otherwise, we can move on to the public meeting. I think that's all we have for work session.
All right, so since we already, do we need to close this and reopen it?
That should be a motion to close the work session and reopen the public meeting. All we need is a so moved.
Okay. Can I have a motion? Yes. Close the work session and reopen the public meeting. Can I have a so moved?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, welcome back to our town board meeting uh of February twenty-eighth. Um. We are going to start with any announcements, Jill, any?
No, the video.
Okay.
Is this a record?
No.
No, it's not?
In terms of timing?
Yeah.
Oh.
I didn't know.
You know, we started at five tonight.
Not really close, right?
Don't tell me that.
Yeah, so we're we're five hours. We're quick in there. That's why we started so early, 'cause I knew it's the way.
Um, all right, uh, anything in my supervisor's report, it'll it'll. It'll keep, you'll read it tomorrow. I'm sure you're all waiting in anticipation. Um. Community corner, I just wanted to wish a very happy birthday to uh Vinnie Malazzo of Village Market. It's his birthday. Uh, yes, so a happy, happy birthday from our town and everyone should go buy him cake from his market. Um, all right, uh, that's about it for that. Any public comment or new business?
Yeah, one hand raised.
Okay, uh, we'll take that one first. Nicole, is it Nicole's?
Yeah, hi, good evening, everyone. Um, and thank you for putting in such a long night tonight. I actually um. Tried to raise my hand during the work session and um you did all uh vote on and approve the exemption for the. Volunteer firefighters and ambulance corps, and that's just what I had wanted to talk about, to encourage you to do that. So thank you mu- very much for doing it, voting on it.
My pleasure. It's the right thing to do. Thanks, Nicole. Was that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, perfect. Have a great night. Thanks for sticking with us.
Thank you.
Um, any other public comment from anyone here? Okay, any other hands online?
No.
So, all right, so given that we already had our public hearing, we are gonna move to uh our resolutions and our consent agenda items. Does everyone remember on the resolutions, we're not doing number eight tonight? All right, uh, Holly, do you wanna start with the consent agenda?
Sure.
Christine, I just note that um the perma item came off the consent agenda.
Yes.
Wait, we're not being remembered there?
So we should note that, is that in here, the consent agenda?
Yeah.
It is.
Okay, we should note that the, oh yeah, the um authorization to amend the, to attend the perma conference is coming off.
Right, is that the one that we were intending to take off?
Uh.
Is there another?
No, I'm sorry, number nine.
Oh, number nine, all right, yeah. We're moving on.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, number nine is, number nine was coming, but not number nine. And eleven we already did, right?
Number nine, yes.
Yes. Sorry, number nine. Yes.
Yeah, sorry, Ed. Please don't worry.
So we should refer to consent agenda.
Okay, great, thank you guys.
Um. I move to adopt the consent agenda. As, as indicated in the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Holly, do the next one.
With the, yeah, yeah, sorry. Um, I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of five hundred fifty-three thousand four hundred and one dollars and forty-five cents. Twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two expenditures totaling seventy-six thousand thirty-nine dollars and six cents. And twenty-twenty-three expenditures totaling four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Listen on the summary, pre-check writing report and detailed voucher, detailed reports. All dated February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Checks will be issued and mailed each payment listed on Wednesday, March first, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize a promotion of Frank Franco from the position of police sergeant to police lieutenant within the Newcastle Police Department. At the annual salary um in the agenda.
You have to say the salary.
Uh, one hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars effective March first, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Lieutenant Franco.
Yes, very well deserved.
Um, I move to authorize the hiring of Bridget Riley and Steven Samuel to the position of fourth grade police officers within the Newcastle Police Department. Annual salary of seventy-five thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars effective April third, twenty-twenty-three. Or the date that Westchester County approves the resignation slash reinstatement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome. And I move to authorize promotion of Kyle Brown and Jeffrey Gennella Junior from the position of laborer to motor equipment operator within the Department of Public Works Highway Unit. At the annual salary of seventy thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-five cents, Group Seven Step Three, effective March twentieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the posting and hiring for two grade two water maintenance workers at the annual salary ranging from fifty-seven thousand four hundred and seven dollars ninety-three cents. Through seventy-eight thousand six hundred and eleven dollars forty-nine cents. And one grade one water maintenance worker at the annual salary ranging from sixty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. To ninety thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of Alyssa Kune to the position of youth coalition coordinator for Newcastle United for Youth Coalition at the rate of thirty dollars an hour. For a guaranteed minimum of fifteen hours per week, not to exceed twenty hours without prior approval from the steering committee effective January first, twenty-twenty-three.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, um, I move to adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town board hereby authorizes the receiver of taxes to approve the waiver of the twenty-twenty-three school tax penalty for the second half. For parcel S B L eighty-one dash seven dash three dash two for the total amount of one thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and eleven cents.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, this last one.
I move to adopt the resolution that the town board hereby authorizes the receiver of taxes to approve the waiver of the twenty-twenty-three school tax penalty for the second half. For parcel S B L eighty dash thirteen dash two dash eighteen for the total amount of four hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty-one cents.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I move to adopt the following resolution. Now therefore be resolved that the town board hereby points and reappoints members to the Millwood West End Advisory Board. Effective March first, twenty-twenty-three with the terms so indicated as stated in the agenda.
So can you read their names? Cause I think it's important that we, committee.
Sure. Okay, sure, yes. Nicole Richey will be the chairperson for three years. Kaliani Narasimha for two years. Leslie Smith, two years. Michael Weinberg, three years. Celine Veras, two years. Jigrit Patel, one year. David Valdez, three years. Sydney Feinhurst, one year. And be it further resolved that the total membership of the Millwood West End Advisory Board shall henceforth consist of up to eight members. And be it further resolved that the town board thanks all the members of the Millwood West End Advisory Board for their service.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to adopt the local law in chapter one twenty-two.
You've already done that.
Yeah, we did that one.
So now are we?
Okay, yes.
Uh, no, yeah.
Do you want me to read that?
Sure.
Okay. I move to adopt the resolution um in objection in objection to Governor Hokel's New York Housing Compact proposal. Whereas the creation of additional housing, including affordable housing, is a shared and laudable goal. And whereas Governor Hokel's fiscal year. Twenty-twenty-four executive budget included draft legislation known as the New York Housing Compact and.
Should I do the whole thing?
Yeah. What what do you prefer?
I do it, it's important.
Okay, sure. And I'm okay, I just wanna make sure that's.
If you're okay.
Okay. Um. Town board adopts the resolution that the town of Newcastle implores the governor and/or New York State Legislature. To remove the Housing Compact proposal from the New York State Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-four budget. Um, and instead. Utilize. Sorry, the legislative process and instead, and engage local municipal governments in dialogue to address our common goals and. Be it further resolved that the town of Newcastle adamantly opposes the governor's proposed Housing Compact legislation. And urges the state legislature to preserve and protect municipal home rule and local zoning powers.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? Okay, and um can we also just have a resolution ratifying the open letter to Governor Hokel that was uh signed yesterday?
I move to ratify the open letter to Governor Hokel regarding the New York Housing Compact that was signed by Secretary Katz yesterday.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, um, can we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.